Oh, there you are.
Now you can hear me.
I'm sorry about that.
Change a setting. So it is now 7:03 PM on Monday, April 5th, 2021, and we will call this regular City Commission of the Sioux State Marie City Commission Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Bosvis Wrath.
Here.
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Talantino.
Here.
Commissioner Twardy.
Here.
Commissioner Collins did call and say he wasn't able to make the meeting tonight, so we would need a motion to excuse.
Make a motion to excuse Mr. Collins for this evening's meeting.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
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 So all are present. So Commissioner Miller will recite the Pledge of Allegiance for us if we would all stand and mute our microphones, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Okay. Mayor comments and general announcements. I think I'll defer those to the end of the meeting because I'm sure that several commissioners will have comments about Laker hockey and Blue Devil swimming and other great things going on. Number five is new declaration of location, and because we are doing Zoom under the Open Meetings Act, each of us will need to declare the county and state from which they are participating from. So I'm Chippewa County, state of Michigan. I don't know who's, Robin, are you taking those down? Okay. Commissioner Bosvis Wrath.
Chippewa County, state of Michigan.
Commissioner Miller.
Chippewa County, state of Michigan.
Commissioner Talantino.
Chippewa County, state of Michigan.
Commissioner Twardy.
Chippewa County, state of Michigan.
All right, all present. Under B proclamations and recognitions, there are none this evening. So moving on to item C, public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments on any of our regular agenda items? So anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments on our regular agenda items? Certainly can have time at the end of the meeting under matters presented by the public, but is there anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments on any of our agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on into item D, which is the consent agenda, and Deputy City Manager, Robin Troyer.
Thank you, Mayor Gary. Under the consent agenda, one, approval of the city commission meeting minutes of March 15th, 2021. Item two, acceptance of the Sioux State Marie Housing Commission meeting minutes of December 30th, 2020, and February 8th, 2021. Item three is appoint Michael Winnick to the Sioux State Marie Housing Commission to fill the balance of a term to expire July 1, 2023. Item four is appointment of Bonita Peters to the zoning board of appeals to fill the balance of a term to expire June 1, 2022. Item five is consideration of a resolution authorizing the purchase of six months of generic time from MERS by Kevin Mayer at a cost of $8,253 with the employee paying 100% of the estimated actuarial cost. Item six is consideration of a contract with state of Michigan for the annual purchase of road salt. Item seven is acceptance of Commissioner Baker's resignation. And item eight is approval of the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Is there any commissioner that would like any item further explained or removed so that we can have individual consideration of that agenda item? Seeing none, Commissioner Twardy.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Has been moved and supported. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Bosvis Wrath.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. E, special orders of business. We have none this evening. F, communications, also none. So moving right along into G, which is business items. Number one, City Manager Brian Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up first tonight is for commission consideration. If I know, I'm sorry. Consideration of process to fill the commission vacancy. As commissioners aware, Commissioner Baker resigned during the March 15th meeting. Per the charter, there's basically two options. The commission can select to appoint a person, or they can go into a special, special election. Since this item is to pick a next commissioner, staff nor I will have a recommendation or really any kind of input on this one. My ICMA professional quote of ethics actually prohibit me from participating in a conversation like this. So presented to the commission is the charter language, which outlines the process and kind of the timelines. Since the commission has taken action on the item tonight, as we just did in the consent item, we now have 30 days to fill the vacancy. So if we don't fill it within 30 days, they automatically goes into a special election. So with that, we'll be happy to provide any more information the commission may need. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Certainly was a surprise to everybody that Commissioner Baker had resigned, but certainly understand that she needs to put her business and family first, and we appreciate her service. And I see she's online, so some habits die hard, and once you get into the every other Monday night, it's hard to not stay there. So as City Manager said, the charter language is pretty specific, and we have been through this a few times before. Basically, we have the opportunity for a special election, which I think we have discussed in the past, and correct me if I'm wrong, city clerk in this case, special elections are somewhere in the $5,000 and more range and take quite a bit or considerable amount of staff time. So we could either have a special election or we could make an appointment. We've done different types of appointments in the past. Some were close to an election, and we took the next higher vote getter from an appointment. And we've also gone to a process where we took applications of interest and went through an interview process and made the selections from there. So there are several different ways that we could look at it. In addition, in our packet, there is a letter from former Commissioner Ray Bauer. And I'll just read it out loud for the audience that maybe hadn't seen it. Dear Mayor Gary and City Commissioners, greetings. I'm submitting my name as a possible candidate to fill the current vacancy on the city commission. You all likely know that I previously sat on the board for 12 years from 2005 to 2017. I believe I have to offer institutional knowledge, understanding of commission procedures and integrity, to name some of those things over my previous three terms. I believe I proved myself to be reliable, prepared, knowledgeable, and passionately pro cities of Sioux State Marie. Keeping this letter concise because I feel the commission is familiar enough with me that they either realize they want me on the board or they don't. Basically, I'm saying I'm here if you want me. It is not my intention to seek reelection at the end of this term. Thank you for your consideration. Good luck to all of you in the future. If there are any questions, I can be reached at Bank of Blank. Sincerely, Ray Bauer. So that is another option. So I think what I'll do is we'll go around the roll call and get all of the input from all the commissioners on what your perspective are. So went forward last time, I think. So we'll go reverse order. Commissioner Twardy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Well, in my almost eight years of being an elected commissioner, this is my fifth appointment. So we have done this several different ways. And when I did hear that Commissioner Baker had resigned, I did reach out to a couple of former commissioners, one of them being former Commissioner Bill Lynn. And he explicitly said that he is not interested in this appointment. But he has done this before. He has been called back by the commission before to fulfill a term. And I think that it's, it was very kind of former Commissioner Ray Bauer to say that he's interested. And I think with everything that we have going on right now and the way that we are actually doing our meetings with a year and a half left in this term, I'm really looking forward to the community being able to choose the next commissioner. And so with that being said, I would like to nominate Ray Bauer to fill the remaining term. And then we'll go to a regular election in November of 2022. And I think that's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Talantino.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess however we decide as a governing body to go about this is actually fine with me. I agree with a lot that Commissioner Twardy had to say. You know, as far, people know how I stand as far as really, you know, like the nomination process. I'm not for it. I really like the people to decide, you know, who is going to be representing them on the commission. You know, that being said, as far as running a special election, I just don't think we should spend the money right now looking at the current budget situation and with budget coming up and what have you. You know, after I got the packet on Thursday, and then I see that Commissioner Bauer had expressed some interest in it, ex commissioner, excuse me. I think that might be a great idea, you know? I don't think we should weigh that out by any means. Here's a person that's going to step right in, be able to get hit, you know, hit the ground with their feet running. I look at myself being here a little over three years. I'm still learning stuff at every committee meeting, every, every angle, you know, what it takes to be a commissioner. So if we were to appoint somebody, you're looking at something where in a year and a half, that person could be gone again. So that being said, I think this is definitely a good, solid idea. I would be all for that, but I'm just one vote. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Miller, any questions or comments?
Well, like you said at the beginning of this, Your Honor, you've been through this a couple of times. I actually was one of the people that I was appointed a couple of years ago before I ran for reelection last year. At that time, I mean, I'm very happy that Mr. Bauer has offered his services for the next year and a half. I'm fairly decent friends with Mr. Bauer, and I think he was a great commissioner. I'm glad he stepped up and said that he could help us out. At the time when I was appointed, though, I was very adamant that I always thought that the person that you put on the board should be the next highest vote getter. So at the risk of not sounding like a hypocrite, I still believe that. I still believe that you should go back to the last election and, and you should put the person on that was the next highest vote getter. Now, I know, I know Greg was elected. I was elected, and Commissioner Bosvis Wrath was elected. I don't know who the next highest vote getter is, and I'm sorry, I didn't. I think it was Mr. Amo, but maybe Robin could help me out with that?
Robin, you have the list?
Yep, so Chad Emo was the next highest vote getter, followed by Abby Bell. And then King Vander Mullen was after Abby.
So I would like to just, I would like to just stick with the way I felt a couple of years about it. I would like to go to the next highest vote getter. That's just my opinion. If the rest of the commission decided to do something else, I mean, I, I mean, I won't oppose you guys if that's what you want to do. I know there's only a year and a half left on it. Mr. Bauer says that he doesn't want to run for reelection, so there will be a new commissioner after that. Again, nothing against ex commissioner, Mr. Bauer. He was great while he was here. But I just want to stick with what my guns were a few years ago. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Commissioner. What year was that, Robin? Sorry, was it 18?
No, that was in November of 2019.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Bosvis Wrath.
Um, you know, I've thought a lot about this since Abby resigned or Commissioner Baker. I get that it would be easiest to just appoint somebody, and Mr. Bauer does know the system. From what I remember and what I've heard, he was a good commissioner. Nothing against him at all. But I do think that we should do an interview process. I don't think we should do an election. It's a year and a half. That's a lot of money to spend. But I think that maybe there's more people out there that don't know or don't know how to do it, or, you know, his letter was kind of, I'm here if you want me. Which is good. I don't, you know, that's great. I'm glad he stepped up. But to me, I just, I would rather do an interview process and give people a chance that, I mean, how many people say stuff about the city? You know, now it's an opportunity. It's a year and a half. Then maybe they'll want to run again, and then they would run like we all have. It's not a long time, but I think it is still time with purpose. So I'm not going to go against people, like we've all said. But to me, I think at least an interview process would be a good idea. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I guess we got a short bench tonight, so my comments. I guess in, you know, in the past rounds that we've, we've gone through it, I agree that I think it's a choice that I'd like to see the public make, our constituents. I think that if you don't run for commission and earn the spot, I think you have a totally different perspective on it after you go through an election cycle and have, have earned the spot and earned the vote and had to go out and work for it. I think right now is a critical time in our history, especially since we are going into a budget and goal-setting planning process currently. It does take some perspective and some understanding of city operations and a little historical perspective and the opportunity to look forward. Right now, it's, you know, we do have some issues with some of the projects going forward, and I think that, you know, it certainly is going to take a certain type of person. I do, I served with Commissioner Bauer for 10 of his 12 years. So I do know him very well, and he's very intelligent, very articulate, and he was a good commissioner. I think he brings a diff, different style than we have on the commission right now. And, you know, Ray does, I think, challenge you, and he has a quick thought process. And he is confident, and, you know, he did a good job, and he, I think, identified well with his base. And I know that he did win election pretty handily at each point that, that he ran. So he was well thought of by his constituency. I think that putting a fresh person in right now, especially almost two years past an election, would be very difficult for them. Especially with all, and very difficult for the administration and, and for us and all the training that they'd have to go through. And all of the tours they'd have to go through and all of the orientations they'd have to go through, and and certainly they would not understand the budget process or any of the processes we're about to go through. And especially with the critical year when we have the Easter Day Avenue projects beginning, and we have the carbide project, and then we have four parking lots, four rows downtown. And certainly, I don't want to put an extra burden on an already burdened administration, city manager, and all of the new people that we have. I'm excited, you know, that we will be able to add another person and get some different perspective, but I am personally leaning more toward, I think that former Commissioner Bauer would be a good fit and would be an opportunity for us to hit the ground running and, and move forward. And not have a large learning curve, and then it would give people, and I know that all of us have had people come forward and say they were interested, and I think it's excellent. And I'm very excited about some of the people that I've spoken to. But it would give them the opportunity to position themselves for a campaign that will happen next year. And after some of these projects and after some of this activity has gone forward, and we get back on track. COVID certainly has been a strange time for us and, and has changed our operations a great deal, and I don't like the phrase new normal or any other phrases that came wrong along with COVID, but we are operating a little bit differently than we would be normally, and orientation would be different, tours would be different, and opportunities to learn would be different. So I, I am in favor and would I think I would concur with former Commissioner Ray Bauer as, as the, filling the appointments. So Commissioner Twardy.
If we want, we can just, like, go back around the table if we want to. Again, one of the things that I didn't say that I wanted to say before is I think it's pretty smart at this point to bring in an educated placeholder. And that's what I would like to call Ray. Because in a year and a half, we will have a new commissioner. We could have three new commissioners. Oh, my seat is up for election. Commissioner Talantino's seat is up for election, and then the vacant seat will be up for election. And so us bringing in at this point an educated placeholder is, in my opinion, it's, it's probably the easiest thing for the city to do. And those of you who haven't been through the interview process, it's also a very time-consuming process, and these are things that city administration has to put together for us. They have to schedule the days and the times. They have to gather the applications. We have to make a post in the newspaper. And so it's just a lot more time already on us trying to do this budget. And so I just think that bringing in, like I said before, the third time, the educated placeholder is just the wise thing to do. And maybe it didn't make sense when I said I'd like to nominate Ray Bauer, so maybe I'm supposed to make a motion. So I would like to make a motion to nominate Ray Bauer to fill the existing term that expires in November of 2022.
It has been moved. Is there support for that motion?
I'll support that motion, Your Honor. That being said, you know, one thing the mayor had mentioned, you know, I did run for one of the appointments or did do the application process, and I didn't get it. And so the next election cycle that came up, I did go through the election process. I really do people, I really do think people look differently at individuals that were appointed versus ones that have actually had to actually go through a whole election cycle. And I think you as a commissioner look at, will look at it differently when you need to go through a whole election cycle. From on a committee to going through everything, knocking on doors, what have you, it really gives you a different perspective on what it means to be a public servant. So that being said, I'd support that motion.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. Are there any other questions or comments? We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bosvis Wrath.
Um, yeah, I'll support that. I told you guys I would support whatever the commission decides, so I'm supporting that.
Commissioner Miller.
I also said if the rest of the group wants to go with this, it's great. I don't want to make any more comments because I have nothing against Ray Bauer. He was a great commissioner. I'm voting yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Gary.
Yes. I would have a question then for City Manager Chapman and maybe for City Clerk in this instance. I think last time we swore the person in the next day, or does it have to be at a public meeting?
City Manager, do you know the answer?
Typically, it's done at a commission meeting, but that's more of a public wearing in. Seeing that we're virtual, I can swear Ray Bauer, Commissioner Bauer in at City Hall, so he's up to speed and ready to attend the next meeting.
Commissioner Miller.
Robin, was that me? Did you swear me in that same night?
Yes, that, when we did you, I swore you in that night at the meeting.
I think we were under some time constraints, but I think, I think some time had elapsed, and Mr. Canelo was here at that time and said that he wanted, he didn't want, like, to wait till the next meeting or whatever. But we were in person then, so now being virtual, I just, I was very I wanted to be at that meeting. So I was at that meeting, and I think you swore me in that, that same night.
I did, because the 30-day clock is ticking, so I think it was a time, and I swore you in after that meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Motion did pass unanimously, so Ray Bauer will be our next sitting commissioner. Thank you very much, everybody. Good discussion. G, business items. Number two, City Manager Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next for commission consideration is a request to enter into an agreement for utility billing, printing, and mailing services. The finance department since switching to our new financial system BSNA have been diligently looking for efficiencies and cost-saving measures. This particular item would secure a services agreement with InfoSend Inc. for an estimated annual cost of just under $30,000 for a three-year term. This would save us a great deal of time and effort in getting the monthly utility billings out. We would also extend this to any of the other department heads who have large mailings, such as the water treatment plant with their consumer confidence report, or any of the mailings Deputy Manager may have to do as well. So we would look for a motion to award the bid for an annual cost and not to exceed 29,800 or a three-year term as presented. If there's any further questions, I am Director Collins is on the meeting.
Thank you very much, City Manager. We'll go through the roll call. Commissioner Talantino, any questions or comments on this item?
No, I'm all set in this, Your Honor. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller.
No, Your Honor, thank you. I'm good with this.
All right. Commissioner Bosvis Wrath.
I'm all set. Thank you.
And Commissioner Twardy.
Just nice to see the savings of $605 a month, so I'm in support of this.
Certainly, nice to see the amount of bids that we, we got. It was nice to see a local bidder. Certainly wish that it had gone that way, and do understand this is a pretty specialized area, and it looks like this company has a lot of expertise in utility billing. So Commissioner Talantino, did you want to make the motion, or is that?
Yeah, no, I'll do that, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thanks.
Make a, make a motion to award the bid for utility billing, printing, and mailing services to InfoSend Inc. the estimated annual cost of $29,820 for a three-year term.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or comments before we have a roll call? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Bosvis Wrath.
Yes.
Motion did pass unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to item G, business items number three, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next for commission consideration is a budget amendment and a request to purchase a new firewall VPN and backup system. Before I start this item, Before I start this item, I will say the IT director is on tonight. And anything over and above what's presented in your agenda item, I most likely have to defer to her. So from what I understand, this particular item, we have a firewall that is about six years old. We are experiencing some difficulties with it. So this is a request to purchase a new firewall and backup system. This is a critical purchase that we need to do. We don't want to lose a lot of our computer data, especially since we've moved a lot of things online. There is a budget amendment requested within this item. We would be taking some funds that we currently have and reshuffling some existing capital budgets to fund this particular purchase. So we would look for a motion authorize the purchase at a cost of about thirteen thousand five hundred and to be partially offset by redirecting the existing capital budget of ten thousand and the remainder from the IT fund balance. And again, if there's any questions, the IT director is with us tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Couldn't afford the sixty thousand for the doors, eh? Yikes. All right, Commissioner Miller, any questions or comments on this item?
No, but hi Bonnie.
Hi, I miss you guys.
It's nice to see you.
Yes.
It is good to see you Bonnie. We'll be back some year.
I tested the equipment this morning, so.
Commissioner Bospas Wrath, any questions or comments on this item?
I just have a quick question, maybe for Bonnie. How long is this firewall software gonna last, did they say?
Oh, years. The current one that we have has been in place since the building went up, which is like eleven years. This one will actually save us money. And this one actually prevents like if we were to do a back backup and then some virus came in and tried to encrypt the backup data, this program will not let it encrypt. So it's much better than what we currently have.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good question. Commissioner Twardy. Any questions?
No, just nice to see Bonnie and I'm sure she's excited for this new firewalls.
Commissioner Talentino, any questions or comments?
Just a comment, you know, cybersecurity is a big issue. You know, you can watch the TV and see how that's going nowadays. If this is something that's needed, you know, I'm all for it by all means. Thank you.
Good comments. Certainly we saw the, you know, we've seen a lot of these vulnerabilities that have happened. And I can tell you, I was hacked as a government employee and they're still paying for that security, whatever the heck it is, monitoring every year for us. So it's, it's a very expensive thing. And this is a protection for not only the city, but mostly for all of the ratepayers and everybody else, our constituents within the cities, St. Marie that do business with us. So this is safety for them. So Commissioner Miller, did you want to make the motion on this?
I certainly would, Your Honor. Thank you. I'd like to make one last comment though for Bonnie. Will this new, will this new firewall stop the coronavirus?
I wish. I can, I can try and see if it's in the content filtering of the firewall, but.
You know, I'm not good with computers, so I had to ask that question. Motion to authorize the purchase of new firewall slash VPN and backup system at a cost of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to be partially offset by redirecting the existing capital budget of ten thousand dollars and the remainder from IT fund balance.
Support.
Has been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Sorry, Commissioner, it won't protect your flip bone, but we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Bospas Wrath.
Motion passed unanimously.
I don't think you asked me, Robin.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
And now motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
G business items, number four, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next for commission consideration is a request entered into a ground lease agreement between the city and Kokozin Elbridge LLC. Herefore going to be referenced as the next group on the Sullocks project. So the city currently owns the West Pier property, the last tip of it over by the apartment building. The city picked it up on a foreclosure several years ago. We have been approached by the group with the next phase, the Sullocks project, to utilize that area as kind of a staging ground. Within the agreement, there's a stipulation that they would be able to put in certain pieces of infrastructure. In exchange for using the land, they will actually be picking up and cleaning up the property for us by moving some of those big rock piles over to the Rice Dock property. We worked with the group from Kokozin as well as our city attorney on drafting the agreement. And we would look for approval of the agreement as presented.
Thanks very much, city manager. We'll go to questions and comments. Commissioner Bospas Wrath. Do you have any questions or comments?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Twardy.
Well, yeah, concerns. Well, so we know the Sullocks project is happening and we're super excited that it's happening. And whenever these subcontractors come in and they want to improve city property, I think it's a fantastic thing, especially in for exchange of using our land as a staging area. However, I am very concerned about the West Pier being fenced off from the community. A lot of people go down there and they watch the boats. And I'm wondering how long this fence, because I see that there, there is a gate sort of to the southeast end of the project, a swing gate. But then actually right on that West Pier Drive, that there is a permanent fence. And how long will constituents not be able to access that portion of West Pier?
So this agreement would be for the term of the project, which is about December twenty twenty-three. We may be able to work with the group to try to keep that open. So when they're not on site and if they don't have any equipment there, they may be able to keep it open so people could go down there. Really, the biggest reason for the fence is just to secure the site, not only from their equipment, but for liability reasons. Again, we can take those concerns back to Kokozin and see if they can work with us on that one. You know, the, the site will be utilized fairly heavily throughout the summer, the construction season. I think they're going to go six days a week, couple of shifts a day. So there will be people in and out of there quite a bit, but that is something we can take to the, the Kokozin, Kokozin group, excuse me, and see if we can minimize either where that gate is off of West Pier Drive, maybe move it down a little bit or see if there's a way of keeping it open during the off, the off season hours there.
Okay, that would be, I understand. Does that mean?
You're closing out a little bit, yeah.
Okay. I understand that they need to keep their equipment safe and especially keep the site safe. There's nothing more dangerous than when people go wandering into construction zones. So, but it would be great if they could maybe move the fence down a little bit. There are a lot of boat watchers that come to the area and they do, they go to West Pier Drive in and then they drive on down and eat their burger and watch the ships. So that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Talentino, any questions or comments?
Just, just a few comments, actually, Your Honor. I spoke to some people today and last week from West Pier Place Apartments. And as we all know, the road that is towards the Sullocks isn't a city of St. Marie road. It's a combination usage of the West Pier Place Apartments and the US Army Corps of Engineers. Kind of reflecting what Commissioner Twardy mentioned, I would kind of like to see if we could keep at least half of that drive open a little bit so people could get down there and see the construction. Because honestly, there's not any given time that you don't go down there and see somebody watching what's going on, you know? They want to see their federal tax money at work and they're seeing it now more than ever in the cities of St. Marie. You know, as far as the road to the south that the, that the, they're going to be entering on, that in fact, as we all know, is a city owned road and right away. Couple concerns there. I would like to possibly see at a city level, if we could get a couple of speed signs, you know, speed limit signs posted on that road. And probably my biggest concern is there is a youth park and a dog run there that is utilized by the West Pier Place Apartments, maybe some type of crosswalk. And just, I want everybody to just to watch their speed down there because there is small children, people walking their dogs, what have you, that are going to be crossing that street. That being said, I think this is a great idea. Once again, we got a contractor coming in, spending their money to make our property look better. And in essence, this is just going to be an oversized parking lot in the long run. So that being said, I'm all for it. Just, I'd like to see a couple of those issues addressed, either at our level at the city or with the face due contractor. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Miller, any questions or comments?
I also think this is a pretty good idea. And anytime a subcontractor like this wants, subcontractor wants to use city property for this and clean it up, it, it definitely needs to be cleaned up down there. But I, I agree with Commissioner Twardy. The people go down there to watch the boats and that, so they can, we're just making a motion tonight to have the city manager execute this agreement with them. So perhaps before he, before he finishes this, he could see if they could keep it open as much as possible or put the fence down as far as possible so people could, could use it. Till twenty twenty-three, that's not too bad and for what the city is getting out of it. I, I mean, it's not too bad, but if there could be a way that people could still get down there and watch the boats and have their burgers and enjoy it down there, that'd be great. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, and I'll just hop in and make it unanimous. That road does need to be open for, I think the core needs access and I think tourist traffic needs it as well. So city manager, if we could direct you to negotiate something from that perspective. I think the rest of the agreement is fantastic. So Commissioner Bospas Wrath, would you like to make the motion?
Motion to approve a city manager to execute the agreement as well, as we discussed.
Thank you.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or comments before we have a roll call vote? You got the road movement there, right, Brian? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Bospas Wrath.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes. Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Good job, city administration. G business items, number five, city manager.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a big one tonight. So for commission consideration is a request to enter into several agreements around the downtown access and placemaking project, excuse me. As commission is aware, this project's been going on now for about a year and a half. It's had a lot of ups and it's had a lot of downs. Most recently, the commission is aware that we bid out that project. We received two bids back. They came significantly over budget. Dave Boyle, our city engineer and staff went back to the drawing board and they value engineered a lot of different components out of that project to get the price down. Basically, and hold on a second. And through working with Director Collins and the finance department, they were able to find the rest of the money that would bridge the gap there. So we're pleased to report to you that we found the money. We're going to be taking back a couple of projects and closing out some previously completed projects and recycling that money for this particular project. So there's three motions with this particular item. We would look for a motion to approve the construction contract and the change order number one, motion to approve an engineering professional, professional service agreement with OHM and a motion to amend the project budget based on the sources and uses as presented.
Thank you, city manager. Thank you to city engineer Dave Boyle and, and city finance director and everybody for all your hard work. I know we've been very excited about this coming forward and we call it a transformational project. And it's still transformational, even though you've value engineered some of the smaller items. But certainly thank you for pushing it forward. This is critical as you drive around downtown and walk through some of the areas like Oak Alley and some of the parking lots and back and, and then behind Huntington Bank too, that it's going to totally change the, the look of our downtown area. So open it up for comments, questions, Commissioner Twardy.
Yeah, I want to also say thank you. Thank you to engineering, finance and to the city manager for having this thrown in your lap when you arrived. And we knew this was happening before you got here and to have a brand new engineer. And thank goodness you have Krista and Collins. But for you to be able to, you know, pick this up and re-engineer it and bring it back to us with the financing is fantastic. It's, it's going to look great. And I'm also very excited to see that it is a local contractor back out who has received this bid. So good for them and it's going to be a busy, busy, busy summer.
Ace, Commissioner, Commissioner Talentino.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I guess this is great. You know, we've been talking about this for the last year and a half or so. So us at a commission level and those who do tune into our meetings know what's going on. I guess the only thing I'm going to say is great and please to the constituents out there, please be patient. We are coming into some very, very heavy construction. As we know, that's going to start this year, totally finishing up by the twenty twenty-two build season. And then by then, we're going to be right into the, the build grant with Easter Day Avenue. And so there's going to be a lot going on. People are going to be inconvenienced, so please be patient. Got any issues, you know, give, give Brian a call at city hall and we'll get through this together. But you know, it's got to look worse before it looks better and this is positive for our city. It's going to look great. Thank you, Your Honor.
Good points. Thank you. Commissioner Bospas Wrath.
I'm just, kudos to everybody who worked on this. I'm so excited about this. It's going to improve our downtown so much. I go through Orc Street every day and yeah, and I keep telling everybody, just wait, it's going to be awesome. So like Commissioner Talentino and Commissioner Twardy said, be patient. It's probably going to be a nightmare for a little while, but you know, we are Ubers. We're strong and we can handle this. So thank you, everybody, and very excited.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller.
Construction of this magnitude is never, it's always hard on everybody while it's going on, but it'll look so beautiful when it's done. Thanks to everyone who made this possible. I, I feel so bad in the last couple of years, all, all the new administration people were, for Mr. Chapman. He gets there as a new city manager, the pandemic hits, city engineer, everybody gets this stuff dropped in their lap. Everyone's pulled through and done a great job and I just, I, I think it's great. And this, this, these projects are great. Thank you, Your Honor.
Speaking of feeling sorry for someone, I skipped you for a reason. Would you like to make the motion, Commissioner Miller? It's kind of three separate long motions.
Well, you know, I'm kind of long winded anyways. Okay, motion to approve a construction contract with, is it Baco, Baco? Baco. Baco Construction Company for the downtown access and placemaking project in the bid amount of six million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. And to approve change order number one to adjust the contract amount to five million, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents and authorize the city manager to execute these documents.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Bospas Wrath.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Commissioner Miller, vote, motion number two.
Motion to approve an engineering professional service contract amendment with OHM advisors in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars and authorize the city manager to exec, execute the amendment.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bospas Wrath.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Gary.
Yes. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Miller. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Uh Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, your honor. Motion to amend the project budget based on the as-bid adjusted project outline on the sources and uses summary as presented.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Bospus-Rath?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. City Manager was looking like the uh neighbor on Home Improvement there.
They were long motion.
I needed to be off guard, yeah. Uh so all three passed unanimously. Thank you very much. G, business items number six.
Just real real quick before we go on to the next item. Um I know there's been a lot of questions about parking plans and phases and all that stuff. And uh the engineering department has a kind of draft. I wouldn't say draft, kind of a concept on what we'll be doing moving forward, but we really needed this step to be completed first. We needed to secure the agreement with the contractor. So the next few days, we're going to be working very closely with the contractor to figure out. Um where everybody's going to be parking at, when their particular area will be torn up. Um kind of the phases, the process and all that stuff. So as soon as we get that worked out with the contractor, we will certainly make sure the commission is aware of it. Um we've been working with all the uh all the property owners that would be affected. We have kind of an email distribution list out there. So we'll continue to work closely as we have with all those property owners, businesses, and everyone else down there, so they're aware of timelines, where they need to park. It's it's going to be quite the shuffle downtown, so. If anything else, I guess that's just kind of a heads up that it's going to be a little crazy downtown, so. Anyways. So next item up for commi- uh commission considerations is a request from the Chippewa County Road Commission uh for support for their. Uh twenty twenty-one millage renewal request that would be going to the voters. Um there is a bit of funding that comes to the city of Sioux St. Marie based on this uh levy. The presented to the commission is a draft resolution, which we would look for a support from the commission to approve the resolution as presented. With this, we will sign it off and get it to the road commission for them to use in their campaign. And their uh uh marketing and P R materials.
All right, pretty straightforward, so why don't we just uh say any commissioners have any questions at all? Seeing none, Commissioner Talantino, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, your honor, that's fine. Uh motion to support the resolution as presented.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please. I guess we can do a voice voice on on a resolution, can't we? Uh all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much.
Hey. Now we're getting stuff done. I like that both boat voice boat thing there.
Just on the quickie stuff, yeah. This is items number seven.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a request going to close uh closed session uh pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act. In order to consider periodic personnel evaluation of a public officer.
And I'm assuming we will not be coming back in after our closed session, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
All right, so anybody want to make a motion to uh move into closed session? Commissioner Torri, hit her hand up first.
Sure, I'll make that motion to enter into closed session um at the end of the meeting.
Support.
Been moved and supported. All it um roll call vote, please. Must be unanimous.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Eric Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Bospus-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Thank you unanimously. We will move into a closed session at the end of this meeting and we will not return. Uh moving into item H, city manager announcements and updates. Looks like you have a couple of things on there. City Manager Chapman.
Name is Mayor, just a couple of things. Um budget schedule, so we are in April. We are wrapping up the budget process here. Um we're planning on giving you the draft budget for the next fiscal year at the April fifteenth meeting. No, excuse me, it's a Thursday. What is the next one? April nineteenth, I apologize, April nineteenth. Uh with budget hearings the following week, we will send you that schedule here in an email and make sure to get those dates and times on your calendars. So that you are prepared for those meetings. And then last little update here, at the end of May, a little early, but end of May, I'll be taking vacation day, May twenty-seventh and May twenty-eighth, just so you're aware, I'll be out of the office.
So any questions for uh City Manager on his announcements, updates? Uh just one question for me. Uh do you know when uh leaf pickup will resume? Is it? Imminent? Now the snow has stopped, we hope.
I, you know what? I remember you asked me that already and I apologize. I will get with the D V W first thing tomorrow. And get that scheduled.
Okay, and I'm assuming we'll publish a schedule and post it on our website then when we do something like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Excellent. Anybody, Commissioner Torri?
Yeah, I have one more uh question for the city manager. I know that we probably are not going to be doing uh a city-sponsored citywide cleanup this year. But is there any way that we could still offer like that citywide cleanup day and allow people to organize on them s- on their own? And we can still get the information out there and say, hey, let's get out, let's clean up your neighborhoods. You're all on your own, you got to take care of your own trash and your own garbage, but you know, let's try to make it a citywide thing, even though it's not a city-sponsored thing.
Yep, so we have something that we're working on and it we'll get that out to you tomorrow. So we've got some plans for that.
Okay, and and then with that being said, I'm I'm fairly certain that the mayor is supposed to take the commission out for breakfast at Frank's Place. And you pay.
Yeah.
We could get together as a commission.
Two time. It's time, yep.
All right, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talantino?
Thank you, your honor. Uh but actually, Brian, I'm going to kind of hit you with a kind of a curveball here, you and the uh city engineer. Is that three-mile road project kicking off for this construction season or next construction season?
I think there's two three-mile roads, construction projects. One's going to be by the county and one is done by us. Dave, you, is there one by the county?
And and that, and that's going to do it in uh twenty twenty-three, and our three-mile road one will be twenty twenty-two.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry about that. I just want to try to get people to understand what's going to start happening very quickly in our community. Thank you.
Good question. Commissioner Miller, you had your hand up, too?
My question was answered, your honor. Thank you. I would like to uh kind of expound on what Commissioner Tori said about the citywide cleanup. If the. If the city has anything to do with it, if we even set that day aside or whatever, like are we kind of liable for bringing people out and getting together? I mean, we don't know where the pandemic is going to be at that time. I mean. Is it wise for us to really do anything? I'm just asking. I'm not, I'm I'm just I'm just saying. Even though if if you set aside a date, we are kind of sponsoring it then, right? If the city sets aside a day, how can you say we're not sponsoring it?
I would say, you know, with it being an outdoor event, people are more than capable of social distancing. Um not to knock on the city, but I mean, there's a lot to pick up to where people can kind of keep their distance from one another. Um there won't be any food or anything like that, but you know, we'll be able to do something like this in a very um COVID-protective manner.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Anybody else have any questions for City Manager? All right, thank you very much, Brian. Uh moving on to item I, matters presented by the public. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to. Bring in anything before the city commission this evening? If you'd want to unmute and. You can have up to five minutes, so anybody in the audience, this is your opportunity. All right, item I is matters presented by the public, so anybody in the audience that would like to bring anything forward? Seeing none, we'll move into item J, which is matters presented by the city commission. City Commissioners, Commissioner Torri.
Thank you. Um I just wanted to say that I was honored to be able to not only represent Mayor Gary, but also the city of Sioux St. Marie for the greeting of the first ship this year. Uh it was a fantastic day. It actually quit raining just long enough for me to uh eat that paper proclamation and then it started downpouring again, so it was really quite fascinating. Uh even though it was a barge and a tug, we still get super excited for those things and the captain uh told us a cute story. It was his first time being first this year and his eighty-four-year-old grandfather drew drove up from Norway, Michigan, and he was standing in the viewing tower, watching his grandson go through the locks, so. It was a pretty special day for that captain and for that grandfather, so that being said, it was a special day for us. And I can't wait to see the pictures. Um Brian got to do be there and he did not dress appropriately. We will teach him. So you show up to the first ship and you are like, you wear warm clothes and you don't wear fancy shoes.
This silly troll wore a suit and fancy shoes and they were not waterproof.
Yeah, and then he learned very quickly that his jacket was not waterproof, but.
I think that was up to the mayor pro tem to warn you what uh appropriate attire was. That was cozy worm in my uh COVID quarantine, so. Thank you very much for filling in. I love that event. Uh I did drive by a few times and uh certainly watched from a uh quarantine-protected vehicle, so.
Yeah. But I. It was great that they moved it up by twelve hours and I'm hoping that they continue to do that every year. Uh makes it easier for the ships to be able to navigate the waters and then it makes it nice for people to be able to come and watch. It was a pretty exciting day around town. It was just, it was crazy to see cars again. When I drove down there, I thought, oh, get there, I can get a parking space, and then I. I was like, what are all these cars doing here? So maybe next year we can have the full commission there. I know how much fun. And how you and I have always enjoyed that, Don and Tim, you've been there in the past, so hopefully next year we can all be there.
Couldn't agree with you more and uh it's a missed opportunity. Uh we have already hammered on Linda Hoth. Um because uh Portage Avenue was full and certainly uh there are a lot of people come up and all the boat nerds come up and uh. We could have uh, you know, quite a an event, I think, surrounding the opening of the lock, so. And uh Engineers Day as well, so no, good, good job and thank you very much. Any other uh? Jody, you've got to say something about Laker hockey.
All right, are you ready? Drum roll, drum roll. Um congratulations to the Lakers and all of the staff um for winning the W C H A. And for the first time in what, twenty-five years, you made it to the N C A A Final Four. Um. Hats off to everybody. I know they've worked so hard. Um and then the home, the welcome home was so fun. It was up at the North Center. There was a lot of people, social distance, you know, as much as we could. People wore masks. Um thank you to the Sioux P D, Sioux Fire, um and State Police. They made amazing escort. I mean, these these guys just, they lived it right up. They were smacking hands, you know, and then they hand sanitized, but smacked hands, they rang the you rang the bell. I mean, all these little kids. In their jerseys, you know, this is what these kids grow up to want to be is they want to play for the Lakers, you know, and you could feel that excitement again. I went to the Joe. Back, you know, when I was in high school and I remember those days and my parents took us and it's something that you just, my son wants to be a Laker, so. Awesome.
Yes, certainly was a great year. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Commissioner Miller?
I also went to the Laker homecoming and it was it was pretty awesome. I was at Lake State in the late eighties and the in the early nineties and uh it uh. It was very nostalgic. It seemed like back then when we uh when we'd win the uh national championships and that, and they rang the bell and uh. Uh it was really nice, the turnout that they had, it was really great. It 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 was nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, uh congratulations. Uh it's been a little while, but the Sioux High Swim team, they were state championships this year, uh won the state championship this year. And also the Sioux High Lady Blue Devils uh district champs in basketball, so we've had some uh really good successes. At Sioux High and uh certainly like Purdue State University, so congratulations to all those kids. Uh anybody else have anything? Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn into closed session? Commissioner Torri?
Yep, I will make that motion to move into closed session.
Support.
Been moved and supported. On favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.